Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 25th. It is 5:00 PM. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. We will be going into our executive session. And just to remind everyone that our regular session will start at 6:30 as documented on our agenda. In executive session, we will be going over the following item. Item 2A. City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss potential acquisitions of real estate relating to the Agnes Street and Vista Puente Drive right-of-way's and related infrastructure and other miscellaneous property. It is 5 o'clock and we are in executive session. Good evening. It is 6:30 and we are back out of executive session. On item number three, take any necessary or appropriate actions on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. There is no actions that will be taken as a result of executive session. Which brings us to item number four. It is 6:30. We have a full dais. I'm calling this regular session to order. And I'm very excited. We have Noah Taywater with us. Noah, you want to come on up? He's going to stand by the podium and turn around and smile so you guys can see his wonderful smile. He is in 4th grade at Lost Pines and his favorite subject is reading. And he, along with him, we have Ashley Diegas. And Ashley's going to come up. Look, they're color coordinated in their red. How cute is that? Come on up. There, turn around. They want to see you too. All right. And she is also in 4th grade and her favorite subject is math. And I let Noah know that that was the right answer, was math. But, just teasing, I know that I had a stepmom that told me one of the things about reading is that nobody can ever change the channel on you. You get to finish the book, you get to fulfill your dreams. And reading is such a great thing. Both of these young people are in the Lost Pines Elementary Pals Organization. And they were telling me that that means they raised the flags. And most importantly, they help new people and introduce them and help them make friends and make sure that everybody feels like they're welcome at Lost Pines Elementary. So we are very happy that their parents brought them. And if all of you will please stand up, we will say our pledges to both flags. Okay, you guys stand together shoulder to shoulder. Shoulder, either side, doesn't matter. There we go. And let's give them a round of applause and Colin's going to take their picture.[243.68][243.68](APPLAUSE). Okay, parents, that's your, here's your chance. Look at your parents. There you go. All right. That was their first time in council chambers and we look forward to seeing them again. Thank you guys very, very much for helping us out.[267.33][267.33](APPLAUSE). If you would please remain standing, we have our Chaplain Cliff Sparks with us this evening and he'll be giving us the invocation. Chaplain Sparks?
Let us pray. Father God, we welcome your presence here amongst us. Lord God, let your will be done in this place, here on earth, even as it is in heaven. Holy Spirit, come and inspire us to make the right decisions. Not just good decisions, but the best ones for this community. And let the meditations of our heart and the words of our mouth be acceptable in your sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Sparks. You may all be seated. Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Ashley. You guys have a good evening. All right. The first item that we're at is 7A, which is the Mayor's Report. And I have just a couple of things before we get started on that. I was wearing my "I Voted" yesterday, so I'm not putting any, I see Councilmember Lee has her "I Voted." I was number 847. And I'm just reminding everyone that the county sent out the early voting. It is for the election that's on November 8th. And just encourage everyone to vote. We live in America and voting is a privilege that we need to all avail ourselves of. And I am in purple and you'll see a number of us are in purple. I was at the Women's Leadership Annual Luncheon. Not everyone's in purple, they're letting me know. The 4th Annual Women's Leadership Luncheon today. Assistant City Manager Rebecca Gleason was the emcee. Our Recreation Manager Terry Lynn Moore sang at the luncheon. And I see several folks in the audience that were also at the luncheon. It was a really nice time. I don't have pictures. I'll have those next time, but I just want to thank the Family Crisis Center for putting on that event. And Chief Stefanik had three of our female patrol officers with her. And it was nice to see all of them at the luncheon as well. Okay, with that, Colin, we can dive in. These are a few things that I've done since October 10th. If we start in the upper left-hand corner, thanks to Good Bull Golf Carts for sponsoring the Alive After Five event for the month of October. Had a great time. And if you are in need of a golf cart, Sarah Rutherford would like to sell you a golf cart. So that's why we took our picture in the golf cart. I also, in the lower left-hand corner, all of those pictures, had a wonderful time. I was very honored to be asked to attend the Compass Rose Harvest Campus Ribbon Cutting. And just a great campus. They already have 240 students and they expect to be at 480 next year. And they're able to get to that, to a total of 700 in the building that they are occupying. And the kids were very polite and excited and "I can't wait to show you my school." And it was just a really, really great morning and I appreciate them, including me. And the upper right, several of us were at the Pink Party. We were encouraging folks to, with October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, you've got to have a Pink Party. And the Terry Lynn Moore and several of the other folks from the City Recreation Department put that together. We started, I don't, I feel like we danced for 12 hours, but I think it was a little bit less than that. But there were, Kona Ice was out there. We had several of our community services out there and we, people could sign up for the big pink bus will be at the Rec Center in early December. And we had a great time out at Bob Bryant Park. Below that, I went to a ribbon cutting for Bastrop Fitness Project. Very cool project. Many of you have seen it from the road and said, "What is that?" Well, you ought to go check it out. It's a gym. They have a spot to put your kids in, which I thought was great because you can get a massage while your kids are in the jungle gym next door. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then on the 20th, I wore my purple for Go Purple Day. So that's some of the stuff that I've been doing. And then if you, Colin, if we go to the next page, I did go to the, and vote on the first day of early voting. And we also had our very first Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board. And they've elected their officers and have their staggered terms and have made plans. They will be meeting on the 4th Monday of the month. So excited for them to get going. I've already mentioned the Leadership Luncheon and here we are at City Council. For upcoming, on the next page, a couple of these guests I will call out. The Farm Street Opry is Thursday, November 3rd. And I'm talking about Terry a lot tonight. Terry Lynn Moore will be one of the guest performers at the Farm Street Opry. So if you know Terry and enjoy her singing like I do, I'm sure that I will see you there. And the Arts Center, the Lost Pines Arts Center has their art fest coming up. And before you know it, it'll be November 8th. And we will be back for our November council meeting. With that, Councilmember Kirkland, what would you like to share with us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. So, there's a number of events for the election season and helping candidates and talking to groups of people and things like that. So there's a lot of that going on. Also attended the Chamber Night at the Cotton Bowl in Page and the Chamber Open House. Made an appearance at the Pink Party and watched you dance. And yesterday, I was able to attend the Celebration of Life for Barbara Walansky at FCM.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch?
I got to attend the Main Street Board Meeting. And now I've seen the good things that they're doing on Main Street. You can see the self-watering planters that they just put out and the crosswalks that are about to go in. So again, a great board and I'm glad I got to sit in on their meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes, Mayor, I was happy to see the self-watering, watering planters also. And actually, that was an idea we stole from our TML last year, not this year, but last year. So it is, does, it is informative to go to those, those things. And we, the Hunter's Crossing Meeting for their PIN was postponed, so I didn't get to go to that meeting. But we did do a meeting for the Historic Landmark Commission and went really well. They had some valid points and we have some exciting buildings coming up. So that's kind of my week.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Councilmember Plunkett?
Oh yeah, I went to the Pink Party and saw you all there. That was fun. And I also went to that event that the Chamber had at the Cotton Bowl Speedway out in Page. And that was the first time I'd been out there. And I was, if anybody that hasn't been, I really recommend it. It was a good time. It was unexpected. I, you know, thought it'd be, you know, fine, but it was, they have a lot more, a lot more to do there than, than I expected. So, good time there.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I went and saw Misery, one of my favorite movies. I'm a big horror person, horror thriller. I actually auditioned for it. I could have played that old crazy woman, but I didn't get it.[756.88][756.88](LAUGHING). But the play was very, very good, very well done. And the person that did get it did an excellent job. I did do the Pink Promise Event at Bob Bryant. That was a lot of fun. I was so tired that day, but once I got there and started doing some dancing and watching everyone else and having conversations, I'm really glad I came out of the house and went. I got voluntold to participate in the Hog Eye Festival in Elgin. I was voluntold to be judge in the children's parade. I really didn't know what I was being voluntold to do until I got there, but I got to see a bunch of little children in costumes and they all got awards. And we paraded around Elgin at the festival and all the vendors and had a really good time. They have a good thing going on down there. So I thank Mayor McShan for volunteering me to do that. I too attended the Women's Luncheon today. I'm glad I was able to get off of work, to be able to come home and take, and go to that. Some great speakers, very inspirational. I did go to the DEI's first meeting. They've already got some initiatives down, so I'm looking forward to them carrying those out and getting their work planned together. And then I attended the candidate debate. And then today, I did go vote. And like the mayor, I do encourage everyone to exercise that right. It's very, very important. I lost by two votes in my first election against Jimmy Crouch. Those votes matter.[849.88][849.88](LAUGHING). Thank you, Mayor.
I love both those morals. Every vote counts and keep trying, right? It all works out. All right. Item 7C, City Manager's Report. City Manager?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My report isn't nearly as fun or filled as yours is. You talked about Bastrop and Bloom. Here are the pictures of the actual planters going in. They are great and as they bloom and they get changed out through the year, it's going to bring some pops of color into areas. Talked about the Women's Leadership Luncheon. These are actual pictures. There's our ACM Rebecca being the mistress of ceremonies. And what blew me away was our own Terry Moore singing today. Who knew she had such a great voice? I'm wondering what other hidden talents the staff has that I'm going to find out about.
Who knew that Terry Moore had such a great voice?[901.62][901.62](LAUGHING).
Well, I did not know. I did not know that.
So we were, the City Manager and I were sitting next to each other and Terry got up with the microphone and she turns to me and said, "She can sing." And I said, "Oh, yeah, just wait."[913.66][913.66](LAUGHING).
So I'm, I'm, I'm telling all my City Manager friends, "Oh my God, one of my staff members is great. She needs to be on The Voice."[921.04][921.04](LAUGHING). Anyway, so, good job. November 5th is our Movies in the Park. We will be showing Homeward Bound. And then November 7th, the Blue Santa Boxes that help underprivileged children in our area will be distributed. So if you can, please donate. The Youth Advisory Council mural and the ribbon cutting was originally planned for the 4th, I believe. It's been moved to the 18th. And we hope to see you all there. It's a great, great, great mural that our youth have painted. And it is, I think, iconic Bastrop. When I was first traveling the area and saw that, I thought, "How cool is that?" Upcoming agenda, this is the unfun part, but this is the work we do. Adding a representative for the CAPCOG, some license agreements for utility attachments. Hopefully, you'll finally see that. We keep pulling that off of the agenda. We are doing a Quiet Zone Study and the design and the construction with Kimley Horn. And then we have the Electric Cab Contract. So our grant has run out and we've got to find some funding and that'll be before you. And then we'll be having a discussion on electronic billboards. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Actually, you are so efficient that we are taking care of item number one with into item 11F tonight.
Oh, great.
So we're, already getting things done. That's awesome. All right. At council, before we move on to 7D, Councilmember Kirkland mentioned it and several of you know, and I am going to get through this, Betty Rucker. We were absolutely shocked, the community, when we, when we lost Barbara Walansky. And Colin pulled these together and it was, I think all of us were in shock when we, when we found out about it. She was so happy and had just spoken at the Board and Appreciation Dinner and talked about the Parks Board and how much she loved it and how she was so happy about the skate park, which is the picture that's in that upper left-hand corner. Barbara had a love for the community. She had a love for children. She had a love for people being able to be outside. And we are all feeling her loss. And I wanted to make sure that we had a moment to recognize just the fabulous contribution that she has made to the community. And with the family's permission, her kids, Jennifer Shell and Jessica Walansky, they are planning on joining us on November 4th at 9:00 AM. We'll be at Bob Bryant Park. Many of you may know that November 4th is Arbor Day. And Bob Bryant was Barbara's dad. And so we will be planting a tree for Arbor Day in her honor at Bob Bryant Park. And I hope that all of you will join us in that. And our hearts go out to Jennifer and Jessica and that entire family. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for her. Thank you. The item that we have on the agenda is the proclamation for Arbor Day. And on the slide that Colin had, Barbara was in one of the pictures receiving the Arbor Day proclamation because she was always so dedicated to the parks. So Curtis, if you'll come forward, you, you can meet me and anybody else. I know we've got some other Parks Board members with us. If you'll come forward, I'll meet you and we'll do this proclamation. Seeing Carrie makes me think about Dorothy. It's been a, been a rough couple of years for the, for the Parks Board. And, and then we lost Ed at, right around the same time. I mean, it's just been, it's been brutal. Okay. Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the world in many languages and cultures, whereas all across Texas, from towering pines to majestic oaks to scrubby mesquites, the many trees of Texas are beautiful and prominent features of our unique and breathtaking landscape. As Texans, we value our trees and the benefits they provide each of us every day. Benefits like clean air, clean water, improving our health, abating stormwater and even saving us money on energy bills. We encourage people in the community to plant trees and celebrate them on the first Friday of each November, Texas Arbor Day. This holiday for trees is an opportunity to teach fundamental lessons about the stewardship of our natural resources and caring for our environment. It's an opportunity to learn what each of us can do to keep the community trees healthy and vibrant. And it is a time we can pause to appreciate the trees in our lives. Trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and enjoyment. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize November 4th, 2022, as Arbor Day. And this Arbor Day will be one that we all remember.
Colin's going to take the picture.
Okay. So that is 7D. We do, oh, sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
You had mentioned the event on November 4th, the planting tree, but you didn't tell us the time, so.
9:00 AM.
Okay.
9:00 AM. Thank you.
Is the public wanting to go?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sure Colin will get that out on social media. 9:00 AM at Bob Bryant on Friday, November 4th. Thank you for making sure I made that clear. Okay, we do not have any work sessions and we don't have any staff reports. Council, I want to give you a heads up on a couple of items. Number one, I have one person signed up for citizen comments, so we will be doing that next. On the consent agenda, I was going to ask for item 11H to be polled. And we also have someone signed up to speak for 11H. So I'm just giving you a heads up on that. And we're not going through the consent agenda yet, but I'm letting you know that 11H is polled. And also, on the regular agenda, item 12G is polled. And we expect that to be on the next agenda, but we will not be discussing that tonight. So just in case anybody's in the audience and was here for 12G, we, we won't be discussing that tonight. So our next item is citizen comments. And we have Gary Moss signed up for citizen comments. Mr. Moss, if you would please come forward and state your name and address. You will have three minutes. And you'll probably, you'll have to move the mic back around. Thank you very much, Mr. Moss.
You're welcome. Gary Moss, 1706 Wilson Street. Just wanted to update everybody on pickleball. You know, it's gotten pretty strange because, you know, walking down the street, Main Street, sometimes I hear people say, "Don't look him in the eye."[1408.82][1408.82](LAUGHING). He'll stop and talk to you for an hour and a half about pickleball. So I decided to come before y'all, kind of give you an update.
You're not going to get an hour and a half, Mr. Moss.
Yeah, I understand. And so, a couple of things going on out there. We're fixing to enter into another lease to add three more tennis courts to our facility, which will turn into nine pickleball courts, which will give us a total of 17. We're entering that as of January. But you know, we started out there March 1st in our 501-3C with 25 members. And as of this afternoon, we are at 243 members.[1448.44][1448.44](APPLAUSE). It's amazing. It's the fastest growing sport in the United States. And I'm sorry, 12G's not going to be talked about because I was going to kind of point out to the recreation people that, you know, pickleball, y'all, we'd love to. But we, we have been doing some interesting things. We had a, a thing for breast cancer out there this past Sunday called DINK for Pink. And we raised $1,000 for, it goes, it's going to the Mama Jamma Big Pink Bus. You know, it was able to donate for that, that thing. And we've got a, on the October 29th, we have a invitational, it's kind of internal, intermural tournament that we're putting on. And it's going to be on Halloween night. And I believe it's 29th. And we're going to be playing in customs. So it should be interesting. So anybody, welcome to come out and watch this. It could be really interesting, for sure. So I just want to point out, we're still going. And any help y'all want to send our way, come on.
Congratulations. Well, the pickleball was not on the agenda, so we can't have a debate about it, but I can state factual things. And I can factually say that I played pickleball for the very first time when I was at the Pink Party. So it's a lot of fun. I hope all of us get involved in pickleball. All right. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. Council, we're on the consent agenda. I've already told you that 11H is polled. Does anybody want to poll any other item? Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I would like to poll 11A for discussion, question, clarification.
11A?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Any item? Does anyone in the audience want to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda without 11A and 11H.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2022-97 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Hunt Communities for the Colony Mud 1D Section 3 as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11C, connection to approve Resolution Number R-2022-96 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Hunt Communities for the Colony Mud 1D Section 2 as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11D, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2022-95 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Hunt Communities for the Colony Mud 1C Section 2, Rosewood Path Extension as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2022-101 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a task order with MWM Design Group to provide the services of city engineer in the amount of $119,600, attached in Exhibit B, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11F, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2022-98 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointing city manager Sylvia Correjo to fill the vacancy as the General Assembly Representative to the Capital Area Council of Government, authorizing the mayor, the mayor to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11G, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2022-104 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement for the provision of Main Street Program Support between the City of Bastrop and the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
We've got approved.
I have a motion to approve item 11B through 11G of the consent agenda by Councilmember Plunkett and a second by, I'm going to give it to Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion about the consent agenda as read? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee? Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. We're going to go in order, so that'll have us discuss item 11A, consider action to approve City Council Minutes from the August 16th, 2022, and August 17th, 2022 Budget Workshop, September 26th, 2022 Board and Commission Orientation, October 3rd, 2022 Special Meeting, and October 11th, 2022 Regular Meeting. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to, I was reading through the minutes and on- on item 10A, we initially tabled that-
Which, which meeting are we talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry. The October 11th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So on item 10A was tabled so that we could discuss item 10B. Item 10B, um, let me make sure I'm saying this correctly. 10A was denied. Okay, 10A was denied, and the minutes say motion failed, but I was wondering if, if somewhere it's supposed to say the item was denied. On 10B, it says the item was tabled, because it was tabled because 10A did not pass. So in the minutes, technically or legally, is it supposed to say that 10A, that item was denied, or is the motion failed enough to satisfy the item?
I think the fact that the motion failed is enough. I don't think you have to have that specific wording in the minutes by law. It's a choice.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, because when I, when I first read it, I didn't see deny, and I actually didn't see failed until today when I reread it. But I wanted to be sure legally we were good as far as our minutes were concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Lee. I'd much rather you guys ask than not ask, and then we have problems later. Council Member Kirkland, did you have a question? Okay, I'm happy to entertain a motion on 11A.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Council Member Lee.
Second.
And again, second from Council Member Crouch. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council Member Lee?
Yes.
Council Member Crouch?
Yes.
Council Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Council Member Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously, and item 11A is approved. All right, Counsel, we're on page four, kind of at the top. We're on item 11H, consider action to approve resolution number 2022-106, amending the Christmas light installation contract with Decor IQ to allow for this contract to be renewed for an additional three years, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, with the contractor providing for findings of fact, repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting submitted by Assistant City Manager Gleason. I've asked for this item to be polled because in 2018, we said we would do an extension before we went out for an RFP, and then in the staff report, we're saying three more years, and that seems like a really long time without doing a, going back out for another RFP. And also, since, since I've been here since 2018, we've made changes, we've added some things, we've told them we don't want to have the same lights along the river each time, and all, as I am aware of those changes, I didn't see all of that reflected in the contract. So I think it's a good idea every once in a while to just have a, let's regroup. We have additional subdivision areas, we, you know, we may, we've, we will have a Parks Master Plan, we've got Main Street. I just think having a, I, I know it's too late to do it for this year, so I'm not saying that we should, I know we can't pull, I'm not asking for staff to pull off. Yeah, she's very happy about that. I'm no problem with extending it for this coming year, but I would like to see it go out for an RFP. That was, that was why I pulled it off of the agenda. I also would hope that we get some processes in place, because we're kind of between a rock and a hard place now since it's expired, but I have confidence that that will get worked on in the future as well. So we have one person signed up to, to speak. Counsel, I'm interested if anyone else, what are your thoughts on extending it for one year or three years as staff recommended? Any comments? Council Member Crouch?
I, I'm good with extending it for a year and then putting it out for an RFP. I think we ought to, we ought to do that, just to keep the pricing current. And then we have been changing it a lot, so.
Council Member Crouch? Or, I'm sorry, you're, he's Council Member Crouch, you're Council Member Plunkett.
One of us, anyway. Yeah, my only question to Rebecca would be to, do you expect there to be much risk in going out to bid next year, or later this year for next year?
So, the first thing I want to mention is that the amendment's actually written for one-year terms up to three. So we don't, the good news is we don't have to change the contract amendment. We can choose to just do the one year and then determine, you can either go out for bid, or all of the major companies that do Christmas lighting are members of cooperatives, which means we don't have to go out for bid. We can solicit quotes and decide that way, either way. So if we'd like, we can go ahead and sign the amendment, know that that extension will just be one year, and then we can come back and have a larger discussion to, to see if we'd like to put it out for an RFP, or if we'd like to go through buy board for purchase, but.
So the issue is, the way it's written on the agenda, it says to allow for the contract to be renewed for an additional three years. So that, it doesn't indicate that it's a, in one-year increments. It says three years. So I'm just trying to be, be true to the, to the whole thing and, and to have some clarity around that. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Am I understanding, is it, this contract, and I didn't see it anywhere in here, and I don't read them as fine as she does, so it could be, though each year, we, we pick a budget for this spending, so it's not like we're locking into a dollar amount for any length of time. I mean, so if our budget's down, we can fine tune that, just so I want the public to realize, we're not locking them into their tax money any particular time. So each year, we decide how much money we have to spend, spend.
All right. Counsel, I, I think this is a good time to hear from our citizens. Everybody okay with that? Do you have any other questions for Ms. Gleason? All right, Lippi Maubie, if you would please come forward and state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Kevin Lippi Maubie. I have Astro Records Store on Main Street, 910 Main Street. And so, this is strange, because I didn't know that the, this item was on the agenda for tonight. But it's, I think it's a good opportunity to take a look at what we're doing with the Christmas lights, and maybe peeling off the lighting of downtown with the white lights from the Christmas budget, and put it into a Main Street beautification project. And so, not signing up for three years of the same thing is probably a good idea before we, and, and I think we should take the opportunity to take a look at, what are we doing? Do we want to have Christmas lights? Great, yeah, that's great. But they're all in the park, except for the white lights on Main Street, and that has a different effect. And what happens is when people come down on Main Street during the Christmas season, they see the white lights, and they don't see it as Christmas celebration, they see it as a sort of romantic addition to the city at night, and it brings people down, there's a lot more people walking around, and, and we have the widened sidewalks now, which allows for alfresco dining. It will become a real good opportunity for date nights, and it will be a good opportunity for the marketing entities around town, including Visit Bastrop and stuff, to market it as a romantic date night place, which may affect hotel rates and things like that. But I think the main thing is, is if we light those trees white, my, my, my idea was maybe from the clock change through the dark months to the clock change, and then take them down again, and just do it like that, but not have it anything to do with Christmas. Have it down as, as making downtown more attractive and safer. And I think we're going to get revenues from the tax, sales tax increases that will actually help pay for those lights, and I might be able to sell some records, too. But, yeah, and then, there was something else I was going to say, but I, oh, yeah, but I think, I think it's a good, oh, I know what I was going to say. I've been pushing for this for three years, and I did, I didn't know that this was going to be on the agenda tonight, otherwise I would have done another survey. But three years ago, I did a Survey Monkey, and I handed it into the Main Street manager, and I sent out the survey, I believe I sent it to you, Mr. Plunkett, as well, as a, as a business owner downtown. And I asked everybody what they thought about it, and of the 18 businesses that replied, that responded, 16 were positive.
And how much were they willing to pay for those lights?
Well, how much are we willing to pay for Christmas lights? I mean, you know, I mean, the, the light, the lights are up anyway, and, and I think, well, how much will it bring in, is another, I think it's an investment.
Absolutely. I think it's definitely worth pursuing and having the conversation. Now, one thing, because you and I talked earlier today, so a request I want to make sure that we get in, which I thought was a reasonable request. We know that they've started stringing them, and we know that they've started with the white lights on Main Street. So Mr. Maubie had asked, is there a way that we could just go ahead and turn on the ones on Main Street now, and instead of waiting until we turn them all on at the same time, could we this year just, just kind of see how it goes, and would there be any, be any harm in having, if, if they're already up anyway? And I'm going to, I'm going to tattle on you. He said, they put them all up and plugged them in to see if they worked, and then they unplugged them, and he goes, but I saw where they plugged them in.
And in the meantime, in the meantime, it was, it was last weekend, and in the meantime, there were people walking around going, oh, wow, how beautiful, it looks fantastic.
Right.
And, 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 and the Christmas lighting ceremony, the tree lighting ceremony is in the park anyway. Nobody sees those lights go on or off at the ceremony anyway, so.
Well, so I'm just trying to make the point of, if we separate them, that's kind of something that we would talk about next year and next year's budget, but I thought your request today of, hey, let's just go ahead and turn it on and see if we, you know, what the feedback is. We also had a conversation about when things are up all the time, then they aren't special anymore, and then it becomes, well, what are we doing special? So it's, it's all a trade-off, because as I explained to you, that, that they cost something, and you're, you're seeing the, the price of them, but it can be worth the cost, too.
Yes, but, but I, I think they're going to cost that much whether you have the white lights on or not, and, and then we can find something in the Main Street budget, because I know there was a surplus last year in the Main Street budget. So, you know, we got, we got money to spend. And I, and I heard, Lil Bird told me that there was a, an EDC and Main Street collaboration going on, too. So I think the money's there, and I think it will bring money in.
Thank you.
Through taxes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I didn't complain.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. On those great issues that he brought up, I was hoping maybe that maybe on the next meeting, the Main Street could give us a, a update on their lighting project and where that stands.
On outlining the buildings?
Right, and, and the trees, and they had a lot of things in the project, so maybe going forward, they could, not today, but next meeting, so.
Okay.
Our next meeting has our quarterly report, so it will be included in that, so we can make sure we do that during the presentation part.
Okay, I was going to say, focus on it, because I know you have a lot in that quarterly report. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So for item 11H, it sounds like it's more of a clarification, and I'm happy to entertain a motion, however anybody wants to do it, but my recommendation would be that we just do one year and kind of regroup for your, for the next fiscal year budget. And I would like the city manager, the idea of, of turning on the lights on Main Street now because they're up, do you need that included in the motion, or is that something you can just do?
I think it's something we can just do, but I would like to survey the Main Street manager, the Main Street businesses. I'd hate to have an action where there's only one business owner ostensibly representing all of them.
Okay. But you don't need that included in the agenda item. All right. So Counsel, happy to entertain a motion? Council Member Lee?
I just actually wanted to make a comment.
Absolutely.
So I, I have long wanted lights downtown, so I so appreciate your comments and this discussion, because I, I have always admired, when I do visit other locations, the lighting, and I don't, it's calming. I don't know about romantic, but it's calming. It's definitely calming for me, and I'm one of those people that'll keep the Christmas lights on outside after Christmas until they blow out and they don't work anymore. So definitely, I think, worth doing, and maybe longer conversations in strategic locations, and I love the idea of maybe doing it when, during the fall. I'm hoping they get rid of the time change eventually, but during the time change, when it gets darker earlier. So I love the ideas, looking forward to the discussion and actually seeing it downtown. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council Member Lee. I don't know who was first. Mayor Protem Rogers?
I'd like to move to approve the, the resolution to do it, to extend it for one year, and then next year, whether we go for an RFQ or RFP, whatever, however the-
Tackle that next year.
Or, or whether she just goes out for bid. But in that, I also like, even though if we do turn them on, I'm just hoping that, because the company that we pay keeps, maintains them, so now in the contract, he's maintaining from the first to turning on until this date, but if we turn them on earlier, they're going to charge us to come back and fix them if they go out. I just wanted to think about the little details that might bite us that we didn't think about, but I move to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Rogers that Resolution 2022-106 be approved for the contract to be renewed for one additional year, and that the city manager do a detailed evaluation of assessing turning the lights on for longer than what is currently contracted.
And I, I'll, I'll second that.
And I have a second from Council Member Crouch.
I like Mr. Lippi's comment about the turning the lights on early, like when the time change happens, because I, I don't know about everybody else, but I struggle when it's dark at seven o'clock at night, and then having the lights downtown at that time through the end of the time zone would be, I think it's a good idea, too. So, but second, Driscilla's motion.
Okay, Counsel, for clarity, on item 11H, we have a motion from Council, from Mayor Protem Rogers, and a second from Council Member Crouch, and it's specifically about this resolution and for one year. Also, for this year, the city manager will do an evaluation and make sure if there is a cost that it, that we can cover it, and we don't, as you said, get ourselves into problems. And then I'm also hearing a direction that's not a part of the motion, but a direction to the city manager that the assessment of lights on Main Street for a time period beyond the typical holiday season be, be a part of the process, and I'm sure you guys will vet that with the Main Street Board and, and whoever else needs to be involved in that. Is everybody clear what you're voting on with Resolution 2022-106? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Thank you, Ms. Gleason.
Council Member, Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
I apologize. Council Member Crouch?
Yes.
Council Member Lee?
Yes.
Council Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Council Member Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming. All right, Counsel, we are moving on to items for individual consideration. Item 12A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-90 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Main Street Crosswalk Murals Project Phase 1, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Good evening, Ms. Butts.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm here on the behalf of the Main Street Advisory Board to discuss the Crosswalk Murals Project. They've been working really hard, as y'all have all stated earlier in your reports, with their Downtown in Bloom project, and then now with the Crosswalk Murals Project. And so, I just wanted to go through on the first slide, kind of the schedule and indicated crosswalks for the next three years. The program is a three-year program where the intention is to place two to three crosswalk murals downtown each year. The first murals will be on the 1,000 block of Main Street at the intersection of Chestnut in Maine and the intersection of Spring in Maine. And then in 2023, we intend on installing crosswalks at the 900 block of Main Street at the intersections of Main Street and Chestnut and Main Street and Pine Street. And then in 2024, which is in green, at the intersection of Spring in Maine and Farm in Maine. So the youth advisory, I mean, sorry, the Main Street Advisory Board has been working in partnership with the Culture Arts Commission to draft the art call, and so they worked very closely together to come up with the scope of the project and all the materials that would be required for the project, and they utilized the Culture Arts listserv of artists to push out the art call as well. In addition to that, in 2019, the Culture Arts Master Plan was adopted by city council, and Strategy 2 of the master plan is, involves creative placemaking. And so, Action 1.04 involves the placement, or integration of crosswalk murals into downtown. And so, the Main Street Board really worked hard with the Culture Arts Commission to draft that art call. And so, they drafted that art call, and with the theme of uniquely Bastrop, and so they really wanted to, art, the art submissions to be focused around all the unique characters of Bastrop. They had over 13 submissions submitted, and the design committee select, narrowed those down to three submissions with edits, and based off of those edits that came back, they selected the two candidates, or the two artists. The first one, well, is by Ms. Janice Lee. It's called The Honeysuckle Crossing, and we, the design committee- And we, the design committee liked it because it's a native, honeysuckle's like a native flower here. Their only recommendation was to change the color from pink to yellow to indicate more of a native honeysuckle plant here in Bastrop. And this placement is projected to be put, installed at the intersection of Main Street and Chestnut Street. Ms. Lee has extensive mural experience. She, her father was a muralist and painter, and so all her life, she really learned from him and his techniques, and she has extensive mural background, and she's done billboards and stuff like that. She chose to do, her specialty is painting flowers, and so she's thought that this rendering was a fit, a unique fit for Bastrop's character, because flowers symbolize the unique natural beauty of our piney woods and all the lovely plant life that grows here, whether it be wild or cultivated. And so the design committee really thought that was a good representation of Bastrop. The second mural is entitled "The Great Outdoors of Bastrop," and that's by Jeffrey Staten. Jeffrey Staten is a well-known local artist here. He is a part of the Painted Bunting Arts and Gifts on Main Street. He also helped out with the installation of "The Charm of Hummingbirds" mural located at Fisherman's Park. And his design is a representation of Bastrop's river life. So his original design was entitled "Tuben," and it had all different types of tubers. The design committee asked him to expand on that and include all sorts of river activities to make it more inclusive for all the activities that we have here in Bastrop. And this art piece will be installed at the intersection of Maine and Spring. So our anticipation, anticipated installation date is for Friday, November the 4th. And the program has been working with the Registered Accessibility Specialist on the crosswalk design. According to the specialist, the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation doesn't regulate the markings in the crosswalks, but however, they do regulate the texture, so they just advise us to make sure, like, the crosswalks aren't made slippery by the paint. They also shouldn't be obscured, obscured for the purpose or shape of the crosswalks, so we will be painting exterior lines to mark out the indicated crosswalks, and the mural will be placed inside of those exterior lines, just to make sure that's mapped out. It's gonna be, the, the lifespan span of a crosswalk mural is around three years, so that's why our program is set up for about three years. We'll be installing two every year, and then we'll revisit the first two to see if they need to be updated, or we need to do a new art call for those. And then they'll be installed using acrylic asphalt paint, and like I said earlier, the first two will be on that 1,000 block of Main Street. The budget for this project is $4,000 total this year. Our Main Street Advisory Board has been working with Sherwin-Williams, and they have generously, generously donated the arts supplies. That includes the paint and the rollers and all of that stuff, so we were able to compensate the artists $2,000 for each of the murals. And if they need to purchase anything in additional, that'll come out of that. And that was budgeted in the fiscal year 2023 budget that was approved by council in September of 20, September 20th, 2022. And this item has went through the Culture Arts Commission and the Main Street Advisory Board for recommendation for approval, and they both approve the project unanimously at the October 4th for the Culture Arts Commission meeting, and October 12th for the Youth Advisory Board meeting. So on behalf of the City of Bastrop, Main Street Advisory Board, we ask for the city council's approval of Resolution Number 2022-90 for the endorsement of the Phase One of the Main Street Program's Crosswalk Murial Project.
Good job, Ms. Butts. Council, any questions for Ms. Butts? Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. How do you, how are we going to control the traffic while we're painting these? What is the plan?
Yes, ma'am. So we've been working with our Public Works Department. We've sent out a road closure notice, so we'll be closing down that block of Main Street from, on Friday at 2:00 PM with the barricades, and it'll open up the next morning at 6:00 AM.
That's closing from Spring to Chestnut?
Yes, ma'am.
From Friday at 2 till the next morning? Okay, just curious, making sure we have a plan on traffic.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of questions. So the crosswalks that are gonna be painted this way, going this way, not the, the other way, right? North and south?
Yes.
Um, so question, after the three years, when they start to deteriorate, the plan is to go back and look at the first two that were done. What's the long-term plan for deterioration?
Right now, we're just gonna be revisiting those crosswalks every two to three years, so we'll, once the, once we revisit the first two crosswalks, we'll look and see if the deterioration is the same for the Phase Two, and continue on that with that, and then probably expand it to additional crosswalks, if that makes sense.
So every, so, 'cause you're gonna add more crosswalks, so just every time you get ready to add more crosswalks, you'll go back and look at the previous ones?
That's the plan.
That we're done.
Before we add additional crosswalks, we would look at the, the existing ones to make sure that they're still looking vibrant and nice, and then if, if we need to update those, then we will do that. And then depending on what we budgeted for the project that year, we can expand it to other crosswalks that year.
And then when I say long-term, I mean, once all the crosswalks are done, is there a plan to then keep up with the, the maintenance after that?
Yes, that, that would be the revisiting it every three years.
So you would still continue to do it every three years, whether you're creating a crosswalk or not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then for the other crosswalks that will be coming up, because you're just doing the two now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are you gonna do another artist call for those and do a completely different drawing? Are these, I just wanted to make sure these weren't gonna be the same drawings for all of them. So you're gonna do another artist call as each one comes up?
Yes, ma'am. We'll do another artist call once that program starts for 2023.
And, and then my last question is, it talked about in-kind donations. How will those be solicited?
So our design committee, they, we were actually going to purchase the materials, and we had a design committee member say, hey, let's think about reaching out to Sherwin-Williams to see if they would be able to provide the supplies and materials. So that was just a partnership that one of our committee members came up with, so it's, in future phases, we'll have to ensure that that partnership continues. If not, then we would be responsible for paying for the supplies. Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Lee's, on the, how long they last. And I, I think you have information, I mean, there's a life expectancy of the crosswalk, and that was right at three years, right? So that's kind of why they were revisiting them every three years. And I just remember that, because I, I liaise on that board, so that's why the, every three years, they go back and revisit it, because that's the life expectancy of what it, what it's gonna be. And they've done a, a ton of research on the whole program, so this has been going on for months and months and months. And kudos to the Main Street Board for doing all the homework and finding out if it's, with the Highway Department, to see if they're legitimate for a crosswalk and all of that. So they've done a lot of homework on the whole, whole process.
So I just want to clarify on the, thank you, Councilmember Crouch, on the three years, really, you're gonna be doing something every year, so if they are looking bad, if they're supposed to last three years, but they're looking bad after one year, then you'll, cleaning them up will be a part of it.
Absolutely.
Because if we're trying to beautify Main Street, having it in ill-repair is the reverse of what we're trying to do. So every single year, you'll be doing it, but your budgeting and your project plan is that every three years, you'll be going back to, so that no drawing is down for more than three years. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, and they won't take on any additional projects until those crosswalks are determined to be still viable and vibrant.
Gotcha, excellent. Councilmember Kirkland?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
So I move that we approve Resolution R2022-90.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Council, you are voting on Resolution 2022-90. Everybody clear what they're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Council, the motion passes unanimously, and Councilmember Plunkett's still working with the, with the microphone button. All right, we're on to item 12B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R2022-99 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city manager to list certain real property owned by the City of Bastrop with a licensed real estate broker, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement and execute all necessary documents, real estate broker providing for findings of fact, repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice of meeting. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor and council. We're just gonna talk about three tracks tonight, but generally, from time to time, we'll go through the surplus property, excuse me, that the city has on the books, and we'll, we'll look through them and see if there's something that we're actually using, is still being used for that intended purpose, and just kind of make sure that we don't keep something that we don't need on the books. We've done this a few times, and these tracks, we believe we can actually get rid of, and there's surplus. And if, for your consideration tonight, is what we'll do is, is hire someone to help us sell those tracks. This is the 200 block of Mill Street that you see to the south here, and what you have here is the 200 block, sorry, I got that backwards. This is the 200 block of, an unopened building block that's never been built, and here is a 2,000, 200 block of Mill Street. This is essentially just north of the business park, to give you an idea of where that sits. The third track is a 25-acre track on Lover's Lane. If you'll recall, earlier in January of this year, we asked the school if they were interested in a land swap here. They have answered and said they are not, so we can also put this property up for sale if you so choose. And in my staff report, I make a recommendation, if council so chooses, to designate these funds for future property purchases, for easements, runaway acquisitions, but again, that's not a requirement. You can certainly spend the money on whatever you want. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe? Councilmember Kirkland?
This 25-acre track, do we have any reason to believe that it would be useful for a Parks Master Plan?
Um, it has been looked at through the Parks Master Plan. It has been leased in the past for a football league. It really has some access issues, and some of those expenses are, are really high, and there's really no infrastructure there that would support that. So those would be additional costs. We think it might be better to, again, put this money into a fund and find additional parkland property that's closer to an actual infrastructure and save some cost.
Council, any other questions for Mr.? Councilmember Lee?
I have a comment, kind of pigging back off of Councilmember Kirkland. So when I read this, I thought, what, I don't know what the infrastructure's like there or what it would take, but if there is available properties, my thought process went to affordable housing. And if we have massive amounts of land that could be used for the community to help with the housing problem and diverse housing, what would that process look like in terms of the city and city involvement? Would, would the city be able to work with developers to develop what many refer to as tiny homes for people who can't afford a home over $100,000, and they only need one bedroom, they don't need three, and they don't want a renter, they want to be able to live in their own home by themselves? I would, what, what would that look like? Would the city, could the city, I don't, I guess we wouldn't want to become, you know, owners and, you know, people paying us rent, but we work with developers to maybe develop a project like that, and if that's something maybe long-term, we could look at with some of the properties we own. That's kind of what I thought about in looking, if we have open land, why can't we use that land to try to bring in diverse housing to the community?
Sure, that absolutely is a use. I will tell you, one of the most important things in affordable housing is making sure it's around a lot of other things. This particular 25 acres is really far away, so you would automatically have to have a vehicle, which is expensive, at least, I would say, these days, like, around $800 a month, on top of whatever your rent's gonna be or your house note. The way that we've previously addressed affordable housing, and Ms. Bills is the expert here, and she may have some ideas on how we move forward, but we allow two, two accessory dwelling units by right currently in the P3 zoning. So, for example, if someone chose, and they were beginning to age out and wanted to help with the property taxes, they could build two accessory dwelling units, rent those out, become rental property, and that would help not only give someone a smaller, more affordable place to live, but it would help them with their taxes, for example, or their house notes or things of that nature. We also have affordable housing opportunities that come to us from time to time, where we give a tax incentive break. If you remember, we discussed the Farm Street Village. That is actually gonna house folks from $33,000 to $55,000, I believe, is the range. That's another opportunity. But if you're interested in other policies, we're certainly, certainly happy to bring those back. You could even require a certain percentage of the development to be affordable, if you like, in the future. But that's a rule that we don't currently have on the books.
Uh, Mayor Protem Rogers?
Just, just for the public solace, so we will go out and get appraisals before we sell them, so the taxpayer will get what the land's worth and...
Yes, ma'am. We acquired this land in, I believe, 96 or 97. We have performed appraisal, and it's significantly more than it was in 96.
Much better, before you sell any of the land, the city always goes out and gets a prepar, appraisal, so we get market value?
Yes, and they've all been appraised.
I, it might have been your phrase, "get rid of." We're truly going to properly...
Put something back on the tax rules, yes.
Yes. Councilmember Crouch?
I, I had a question on this, this parcel as well. So if, if it was involved with the land swap, a, a potential land swap at one time, was that still an option, even if we're moving forward with the sale of it? Could it be potentially used in a land swap?
Um, for, so I, if we sell it, maybe we could use those funding to purchase additional land.
Mr. Jobe? We, we really want to hear this from our city attorney, because there are certain entities that allow us to swap. We don't get to just swap with our friends. Mr. Borquez?
And mayor and council, it's really limited to government entities in terms of swapping, such as a school district or the county. There are certain non-bid, non-auction conveyances we can make to certain nonprofits, but not to corporate entities.
Or private individuals.
Or, or private individuals, correct.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Normally, we have to sell land through bid or through public auction. The legislature changed the law a couple sessions ago to allow home-rule cities to do this course of action, which is listing it with a commercial broker like any other property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Thank you, Mr. Borquez. Didn't mean to cut you off, just didn't want... Councilmember Lee?
So just so my mind is clear, what do I need to technically do to get it on, like, people's radar to consider some type of development that would bring partnerships that would promote diverse housing? Do I just say, that's what I want y'all to work on? Or, how does it work?
Direction to staff by the council collective that that's what you want us to come back with, and then we will bring back some opportunities in the current code and maybe some potential options for maybe code amendments.
So are you talking, just for clarity, so we all understand what the request is, on this particular lot?
No, in general.
Okay, all right.
Talking about future.
So that'll be a, a future plan?
Yes.
So, but tonight, what we have before us is, is these three pieces of property, but yet absolutely, city managers noted that, so that'll be in a future plan.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-99.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Rogers. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Is everyone clear what they're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. Resolution R2022-99 is approved. We're moving on to item 12C. Council, is everybody okay? We've been in meetings since five. Everybody all right? Keep going, or do we need a break? five. Everybody all right? Keep going or do we need a break? Everybody okay? All right. Item 12C, consider action to approve the first reading of resolution number R 2022-105 of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the expenditure of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation funds for an infrastructure project in the amount not to exceed $1,620,000, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing for an effective date. Good evening, Ms. Ryan.
Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and City Manager. Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ryan. Councilmember Kirkland?
There's something I may not be aware of, but we're doing a first reading of a resolution and we usually...
I'm going to get to that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. I am Angela Ryan, the Operations Manager at the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. Also with me tonight are Jean Rehman Schneider, the Project Manager, and Nick DeBose with Ducey Engineering. Excuse me, Duceb Engineering. Tonight, we are requesting approval of a resolution so that we can engineer an infrastructure project in the southern portion of the business park in an amount of $1.62 million. Now, to your question, as to your question, Councilmember Kirkland, I have to start with a Mea culpa. Mea culpa? I messed up is what I'm trying to say. Normally, when we come to you guys, we have to do two readings of a resolution under 505158. However, we did not do that under that, do this resolution under that local government code. This time, we chose 501103. That does not require a second reading. Once I confirm that with our attorney, I wrote the resolution correctly, but I neglected to go back and change the staff report. So in certain circumstances, Councilmember Kirkland, yes, we do have to do two readings, but because it does not match, this is the explanation, is why it doesn't match the resolution. The resolution's correct. The staff report is not. So we may need to check with your attorney. I would think we could go ahead with one reading, hopefully.
Mayor and Council, I agree. The section under which this project is being done only requires one reading.
Okay. So it's not even so much the staff report. It's the staff, the staff report matches the agenda and really what we'll, if someone was so inclined, they would just be making a motion to approve. It's not a first reading. So we can take care of that in the motion.
Correct. That's why it doesn't say at the bottom that it needs to come back. It was just, I missed it. So...
I'm sorry, Mayor and Council. Under state law, there are some resolutions you consider to approve EDC projects that do in fact require two readings. We're not used to reading a resolution twice around here because our charter doesn't require it, but sometimes the local government code does.
And local government code wins.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. Okay. So are we, everybody's cool?
Okay. I'm going to ask Jean to come up and she's going to give a little history, a little background on this particular project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us this evening. For the ones that are not familiar with our Bastrop business and industrial park, it is located off of Jackson Street, just south of Highway 71. We have pretty much built out the entire upper northern portion of our industrial park and we are now, the EDC board has now started to evaluate what the lower portion of the park may look like. We have roughly about 107 acres in the lower portion of the park. Some of that along the eastern edge is one in the toad habitat, just a small, small lower portion of it, as well as the topography on that eastern side is quite great as well. You basically can stand at the bottom of Jackson Street at the dead end and look straight up the hill. So from a, from a development standpoint, we're evaluating all aspects of that. And what you all see here on the map is, is one, what has already been built out or sold to potential projects and what is remaining, which is basically two, two full lots, one of which has some significant challenges that we have to overcome to be able to build on that site. The 2.8 acres that currently wraps AEI Technologies is being looked at for a potential project. So again, we basically have two available lots left in the current platted, developable area. So that is why we are coming to you tonight to seek the approval of the engineering for the remainder of the business and industrial park. This is one example that is in the submittal for the rezoning and also for the potential of the full engineering of the lower part of the park, showing the first roadway coming down south off of Jackson and going east to help support the Moca.
Are these, I'm sorry, are these maps in our packet?
They are not.
Oh, okay. All right.
We can get them to you, though.
Well, now you want me to make a decision, though, right now. Getting it to me tomorrow is not going to help me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then this is one, a little bit, it shows a little bit more of kind of the potential drainage areas as well as the roadway and other utility infrastructure. And we also, as Angela said, we have Duceb, Nick with Duceb here as well to answer any kind of technical questions that you may have.
Council? Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Would you mind putting the maps in there? Because it's really hard to, not in the future, because it's hard for me to see what you're trying to ask me to approve.
We received them yesterday, so we apologize.
Oh, I'm just letting you know, in the future, my mind, I can't see.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkland?
I second the maps.
You got it.
Like to see it, yeah.
Yes.
And I have to say, as mayor, I have been really blessed to serve with council members that read the packet and if they weren't looking at the packet, they wouldn't be asking the questions. So it's really important that the information needed to make a good decision be included in the packets, which are posted Thursday before a Tuesday council meeting.
Yes.
So. Any other questions for the, for Ms. Rehman Schneider or Ms. Ryan, either one? Councilmember Kirkland, you have a wait a minute look on your face.
Yeah, maybe the other map?
That one?
No, no, no. The first one, yeah. The simple one.
The clean one.
Yeah.
Colin, can you make it bigger? Mayor Pro Tem Rogers wants to know. We're trying, I believe what council's asking is exactly what are we approving?
Yeah, which roads are you building?
Sure. So, Colin, if you could actually do the lower part as the highlight, there you go. So basically where the two black kind of dead end circles are there and the new gray starts below that, not the road that goes to the east, because we're already building that, that is already in motion, but everything else from a roadway infrastructure as well as any and all utilities that would go along with that, as well as any drainage that would go along with that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So all of the gray except for what?
That northern, and I, let me see if...
The little sideways thing here.
Yeah, the little spur to the, to the east that is gray.
At the very top?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But the other two gray ones?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And basically the two roads that would go out to the east and then the one that would come to the south, we are proposing those to be emergency exits only, so they would have the crash gates on them until further development in and around and the roads in and around that area could support any additional traffic. Because currently right now, the, the road just south of the industrial park is technically, it's partially paved and just couldn't handle a whole lot of in and out traffic.
Councilmember Crouch?
How, how many lots can you get out of these? Is that, is that planned out?
So that is part of it. The board did vote to evaluate more of the small lots and I believe we came up with about 12 that are anywhere from about two and a half acres upwards to 14 acres.
So potentially $1.6 million divided by 12?
Give or take, yes.
Okay.
Are you extending like telecom, fiber?
Yes, sir. We, we do have fiber light in the industrial park and so we will extend that down as well.
I see one of the line items is a lift station. Where does that go?
Yes, sir. So right now, we're evaluating, it will go south of the natural gas pipe easement and we are either evaluating, looking at it going directly into, Colin, can you scoot that up just a hair for me, please, sir? Thank you. Just below, south below the detention pond that's on the far west side. It'll either go just below that potentially or we actually own the seven acres on the, on the other side of the railroad tracks. We have, we all, we will be evaluating whether or not it can go on that as well and we may end up pulling all of the detention and doing a big regional detention across the railroad tracks as well. We're, we're looking at all, any and all options to make the most usable, developable land in the remainder of the industrial park.
And that'll be in coordination with the city, obviously.
Yes, ma'am.
And looking just at the other line items in the estimate, there's a going on here for mobilization. What does that mean?
That is, Nick can probably go into more detail, but yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Nick, like I said, from Duceb. So mobilization costs are...
I need you to get closer to the mic. Thank you.
Sorry, I apologize. And I apologize, I'm, I, my wife is sick, so I'm following CDC guidelines and all that sort of stuff. I've tested, I'm clear, just so you know. The mobilization costs are typically just the costs for a contractor to get on a job. They're startup costs to procure equipment and get all of the, the equipment and subcontractors to the site. So it's a...
He's trying very hard to not say the word mobilize.
Yeah.
It's getting everybody started and getting them physically to the site.
It's important because if you stop the project and the contractor has to leave and come back, you re-incur that cost of mobilization. So it's kind of a lump sum item to start the project, start construction. So...
And it's the second largest line item on here. Are we comfortable with that amount of money for that? I mean, from other projects? Is that a...
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's generally lump sum. If they're going to pull crews, they're going to drop off equipment. And once they're mobilized and the reason they, the reason it's a lump sum is because you're either there ready to work or you're not there ready to work. And if you, for whatever reason, have to stop them and they go away, then you're going to pay a, guess, you guessed it, re-mobilization.
Got it.
Yes. I have a question. So I heard, because my ear's perked up, we're going to divide into a number of lots. So if we're doing the engineering, we may be in advance of ourselves of doing the lot. So I just want to work with you guys really closely to make sure what we subdivide matches the infrastructure you're going to try to put in or that is priced in this 1.6 million.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that's why we've started with this part, is to actually determine, one, from a topography standpoint, from a waterway standpoint, if there are any that run through that area that are, that are maybe not identified. All of those things, because again, the board decided to go with a small lot concept. We don't know what will actually fit until we get in there and do all of the visual, on-the-ground evaluation.
And that, but that should happen before this. But either way, we, we need to work that out because by the time you get to this point and you're looking at water, wastewater, actual construction on the ground, you should pretty much know how many you're going to serve or should serve.
This is not any construction. This is just the engineering evaluation to determine where the roads can actually go and all of that. Yes, ma'am.
So you'd have to re-engineer if we had. So I, I just want us to work really, really close to make sure we don't throw good money after bad and have to come and re-engineer something.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Crouch, I wanted to make that comment as well. You shouldn't think about the 1.6 million divided by 12 as much as you should think about the 1.6 million divided by the linear footage of frontage because we really don't know.
How many lots?
Because even if they plaid it with, and you said 12, so I'm going to use 12, you may have someone coming in by four lots for a, for a project. So the lots is, is not really the best equalizer for that denominator, but the linear footage of utilizing that, that roadway is.
And also the block radius. We were trying to work within the block radius and this depiction that you all are looking at here is not as, Colin, can you take me out of that? Thank you. This, I know it's not that much of a difference, but it is a difference because of the way that the roads work together. But again, it's, it's more fitting with the block grid and, and that connectivity that the city is looking for.
When are you anticipating plating this?
It will not, my understanding from talking with the engineering firm is it will not take place until we fully know what we're actually capable of. So it would be after...
I didn't know if you had set a timeline for getting it planted.
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Councilmember Crouch?
I've got a question with the mobilization costs because that seems like a very high mobilization cost for a $1.6 million design contract or engineering contract. What is it, what's included in the $280,000 for that? That seems like very high.
So I would say that the design fee of, you know, 1.6, not to exceed 1.6 million, is not related to, not directly related to any of the, any of the cost items?
It's the 280, hang on. It's the 280,000 out of the total construction cost estimate. It's not 280,000 out of his contract.
Got it. I got it. Thank you.
And that is, it is important to note, though, also that this is our OPC for the entire project, which is a total of 12.8 million. So that 280,000 is a, is a lump sum. Obviously, the project's not going to be constructed all in one phase. So that 280,000 of mobilization would be expected to be divided percentage-wise per, percentage of construction for each phase.
Council, OPC is an opinion of probable cost and in the old days, we used to call it an engineer's estimate. And I'm somehow in my heart, I believe attorneys are involved in why it's now called an opinion of probable cost, but I won't comment on that. That's what it's called now, is an opinion of probable cost. And in the business, they call it OPC.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch, your light's still on. Do you have another question?
Yeah. No, I don't. That, that answered my question. I just looked at it incorrectly. I'm sorry. Apologize. Still seems like a high fee, though.
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind is it's truly an opinion of probable cost. This is not the bid for the project because they really don't even know for sure. They haven't finalized the, the total linear feed of, of road once it's designed.
Yeah, I get that. I just still think it's a high fee.
And there will be re-mobilization once you, because you're going to break it out into pieces. There will be re-mobilization. Trust and rest assured, as the project price goes up, that price will go up. But it is within a general range, I would think, 30 to 50%, right?
The good news is it's an opinion of probable cost and he's the engineer and it's his opinion. So that's, that's why it's in the estimate that way.
And typically, we see them charged, we see mobilizations, mobilization fees calculated as a percentage of total construction cost. That's typically the way that a contractor would give that item in, in their bid, is as a percentage of their estimated total cost of construction. So they don't, they don't, to my knowledge, anyway, I don't know of any contractors who calculate out their actual cost of mobilization and provide that as an estimate. They typically, it's, it's just a percentage of their overall cost.
Thank you. All right, Council, for clarity, we are talking about resolution 2022-105. We will be approving this resolution if someone so chooses to make a motion and this is for the engineering of the roads that we have discussed this evening. Anybody ready to make a motion? Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I do think it's really important that we get this going so that we can make these sites show already. So I would like to move that we approve our 2022-105.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett and a second from Councilmember Lee. Council, do you have any questions? Are you clear on what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, if not exuberantly. All right, moving on to item 12D. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2022-100 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving an award of a standard contract for professional services with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $80,000 for the transportation impact fee study as an exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a appealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So what we're here to talk about tonight is approval of a contract with Kimley Horn, who's worked on some other transportation projects for the city. This one is specifically to look at, it's a transport roadway impact fee study. This is a study that's done to, it's the first step of establishing a transportation impact fee. That would be on a trip-by-trip basis and the consultants are here to explain it a lot better than I can. So the first step is doing the study and then actually implementing the fee if the council so chooses. And we've got Ben Platt and Matthew Gale with Kimley Horn and they're going to go through a little presentation about what all this will entail.
Are they going to answer what the percentage of mobilization normally is on, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. teasing, I'm just teasing.
We'll have another one.
They have an opinion of probable cost as well.
We have lots of those.
Good evening.
Hi, hi, Mayor Council, good to see y'all this evening. First off, I'd say Jake Gook, who's apologized for not being here tonight, he had a conflict he could not move, so this is his presentation, I'm second best at giving it, so I'm here to give it. Okay, yeah, so our first slide is, you know, what is an impact fee? There's a lot of text here, but basically, it's a one-time fee that we assess at plat, or is assessed by the city at plat, and paid when the building permit is issued. In the state of Texas, impact fees can apply to water, wastewater, roadway, and drainage. In central Texas, several of the municipalities have adopted these recently, especially in central Texas, there's impact fee, roadway impact fees in Austin, Flugerville, Round Rock, Leander, Georgetown, Hutto, New Braunfels, all over the place. And these are kind of the components we're gonna go through in a little bit more detail. This will be, all be in the proposal that you all have, yeah, we'll touch on each of these. So the first thing is, what is a service area? So a service area can be anything from one service area for the entire city down to, you know, 10, 15 separate service areas. The advantage of having one service area is that you can take impact fees from anywhere in the city and apply it to any project within the city. The advantage of having more service areas is that you can apply impact fees differently. Say you really want some low-income housing in a certain area, you can make it incentivized using impact fees there. Big red bold on here is, impact fees do not apply to the ETJ, so if impact fees were adopted, a separate policy would need to be made for the ETJ, TIA, or whatever that Land uses assumption, so this is basically where we forecast how much growth we think the city is gonna experience in the next 10 or so years, so we look at things like developable land, how the rate of growth is going currently, and we need to make sure this is consistent with city planning estimates. Okay, so we're talking about service units, this page kind of defines service units, but basically, how I think of it is, you know, there's a water meter, your service unit's really obvious, because passing by that water meter, you know the size of it, you know what it can serve. Traffic's a little harder to estimate, how much is exactly happening, so that is the purpose of the unit. The, the basis of the unit is one vehicle to go one mile, it's a little confusing, but I think of it like a water meter, how much traffic are we adding? Yeah, so what's eligible, where are we able to assess impact fees? Basically, when I think of impact fees, it's the construction cost of capital improvements that are on the CIP, this can be a lot more wide-ranging than just, you know, building something directly, that's, you know, survey engineering fees, this can be used for land acquisition, as well as debt that's on the CIP, so if you build a project ahead of time, you can pay down debt using impact fees on that, if it's on the CIP, serving future development. What we can't use impact fees on is maintenance of existing facilities, or upgrades to serve existing facility, or existing development, so there's a bunch of traffic now, a road's really bad, that's not what we use impact fees for, we use it for the new people coming So this is how we calculate that maximum fee, that's another one with a ton of text, I like to think of it as, we need all this money to take care of all this new traffic, so the maximum fee you can assess is basically add up the cost of all of the new projects, then we divide it by all the new traffic that we see is coming in. We're back to that water meter example, a unit of traffic is basically a vehicle mile, that, that's what we call it, so how many dollars per each vehicle mile, since, you know, huge development will add a lot more vehicle miles than a small development, basically. I have an example of how it is calculated, more, more red text for you. This is, you know, TBD, $1,000 pulled out of a head, out of my head, nothing specific there, but how we would assess it was, let's say a 350-unit apartment complex is coming in, we decided that we would assess $1,000 per vehicle mile, so you'd multiply $1,000 by 350 units, and then for that land use, we assume that the vehicles are going two-vehicle miles per unit, and the fee would be $700,000.
On the two-vehicle miles per unit-
That's also a made-up number, but yes.
No, no, agreed, what, what does that represent? Is that two vehicles going one mile, or, or how do you come up with such a-
One vehicle going two miles, so, you know, people leaving an apartment complex are likely to drive two miles within Bastrop, is what that's saying.
Okay.
There. And this is where council's involved next, that's the maximum fee, that's what we're gonna help you calculate, but council would adopt a rate per type of land use, or in general, it's rarely 100%, it's rarely 0%, somewhere in the middle over there. Yeah, and this slide's kind of go over the checks and balances, I like to start this one by saying, we're math, we're, we're here to just do the math, all of this is, is based on national standards, I didn't make up, you know, there's, there's tons of people doing all kinds of studies to, to get all the, the numbers here, and we're putting it together for you in a report, in, in a policy. And also, generally, we'll have P and Z here to advise as well, so all stakeholders are kind of represented. Of course, with any project, there's a ton of keys to success, you know, we need a defensible up-to-date master plan, we need stakeholder involvement, like I described previously, we need everyone, you know, to understand the, the goals, the objectives, including council, developers, you know, this doesn't work if developers confusing, I'll walk it through them every time, they'll like it once they figure out that it's easy. And lastly, you know, it needs to be actively managed, you don't just set it and forget about it, you know, staff needs to be trained, everyone knows how to use this tool for it to be successful. That was a lot of talking, at the end of the day, the, one of the bigger deliverables will be, this is a one we've made previously, I think the example that we gave was Round Rock, and you just put your land uses in there and everything, and it'll spit out your impact fee, it's, it's pretty quick, pretty snazzy, we could always provide one for y'all to play with, I think this is right on their website as well. Yeah, so no one's, no one's getting the calculator out, it's, it's right in a, right in a spreadsheet. Yeah, bottom line, I mean, I, whenever we suggest this tool, we wanna make sure it's the best use for the city, and the important things to think about are kind of the rate of growth, the political environment, development environment, and what other funding mechanisms are available, the purpose is to provide necessary infrastructure, not necessarily just collect revenue, that's what we're thinking about doing here. Okay, I went super quick.
So in our comprehensive plan, one of the things that we talk about is making sure that development pays for itself, so there's such a thing as, as finding that balance, so that if you're an existing taxpayer, and there's a new developer that comes in, you're not paying, and, and some people would say subsidizing their development. Equally, it's unfair, you made the example of, if we have horrible pavement conditions and a bad problem with traffic right now, it's not fair to say, oh, new developer in town, we want you to come fix all of our existing problems. So this is scientifically, because you are coming, because you are using land this way, this is a consistent way that developers that would be looking at developing in Bastrop would know to, from, from the math, here's the maximum. Then, it's policy, let the negotiations begin, and, and then with the help of how we adopt the policy, we can say, well, to your point, maybe, Councilmember Lee, if it is a certain type of housing, we waive the fee, but you have to have this many units, you have to have, we can set the policy around it, you're trying to give us the information that's the foundation of a policy that we would work together with staff to come up with, is that clearly-
Yeah, I think you summarized that great, the, the one clarification I'd like to make is just that that policy has to be adapted, or adopted beforehand, so you can't change the policy once a developer comes in.
We can't change it every day, depending on-
Not every day, developers, I think, would kill you if you did that.
So we'll, we'll be working on the, that together, just so that we can develop, and, and then that allows us to have an interactive form on our website, because the rules are the same for everybody.
You, you could change it every council meeting if you'd like to, but it'd be very, it'd be quite the, quite the headache on the, on the back end, yes.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Okay, my question is kind of basic, or confusing usually, coming out of me. All right, so you're gonna give us a formula, and then we can pick what range we want it to be at, correct?
Correct.
So how often should that formula be updated, like the cost of living goes up, how, how often should we look back at the numbers that you, that you calculated to give us that form?
Right, yeah, so this needs to be updated every five years at the most, so some cities will do every three years, I think we've seen that in Round Rock, they do every three years, but five years is the maximum.
Okay, all right, just curious how often you need to update your numbers, so we can update our numbers, just curious.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Can you go back to the slide on the market survey?
Markets.
Yeah, it was a, it was, you said it was one of your deliverables, that it was, you're gonna tell us about the impact rates at other locations?
Oh, oh, there is-
It gets closer to the beginning.
Oh.
I thought this would be easier.
Not that many slides. Not that one.
Do you wanna know what a market survey is, or what's the question?
No, the, the market survey, for instance, if you told us what the impact fees were for all of the other communities per unit mile, I would also, so, so that, that number has different numerators in it that are dependent upon the, the projects that are necessary in that environment, and so in some places, it might be 10,000, in other places, it might be 1,000, and it's hard to kind of compare those if ours is 2,000, if we're high or low. So I guess my question is, or my, my request is, that in addition to the dollar amount of the other cities, I'd like to see where their council set their, say, percentage of max at.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
See, that was an easy question.
Well, it was, but I, you know, yeah, and then, how, how long will this take?
Generally, 12 months for us to do the study and have it approved.
Councilmember Crouch?
Jennifer, do you know when the last study we had was?
Never done one before.
We have never done a transportation impact fee study in the city, we've done, our last transportation plan was in 2016, and it's actually funded for this next fiscal year, this current fiscal year now, to redo the transportation master plan, and, but this will be set up in a way that once we update that transportation master plan, it plugs back in and you can update the fee, so.
Yeah, we've never done it before.
Okay.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Plunkett?
I just think it's important to note that, you know, what this allows us to do is to build out infrastructure ahead of time, before the development comes in, that way we get to do it the way we want it, where we want it, and, and the developer knows what the cost is going in, rather than what we've done in the past is, as one developer comes in, we say, okay, well, you have to build a part of the road across your property, and it doesn't go to anywhere, and so then the next one has to do it, and then you do it piecemeal at a time, it costs, takes longer to do that, it costs more to do that, and the citizens don't get the benefit of the through streets that wind up being built until the last guy gets in there, so I just think it's important to know that. It also increases the value of the land that is around that, because it makes a more developable piece of property.
But for clarity, the impact fee study is not committing us to build any roads, it's-
Of course not.
Okay, I just didn't want anybody to hear, well, I heard Councilmember Plunkett say they're gonna be building a bunch of roads, so, all right, Councilmember Kirkland?
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-100.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers to approve Resolution 2022-100. Great job. Any further comments or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, the motion passes unanimously, we are on item 12E, and we only have two left, 12E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-102 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the purchase of easement rights for the construction of the Simsboro Aquifer Water Treatment Plant, Well Field, and Transmission Facilities Project in the amount of $23,506.40, authorizing the City Manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. You do not look like Fabiola. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you. Yes, and I just realized I was gonna do this item, so, let's talk about it a bit, so there is, the easement rights are being acquired for a 24-inch transmission line that will essentially bring the new water from the well field, the new treatment plant, all the way to the existing plant on Willow. What we have here is, is property that we previously discussed, sorry, I'm a little caught off guard, I didn't realize Fabiola wasn't here, so this is within the negotiated amount that's allowed by council, they were signed previously because they were under the required amount the City Manager could authorize, and what we're doing here tonight is essentially ratifying to purchase the land that we need to allow the construction of the water line.
Councilmember Plunkett?
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, that gives us, we're on to item 12F in the middle of page five, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-103 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the purchase of easement rights for the construction of the Simsboro Aquifer Water Treatment Plant, Well Field, and Transmission Facilities Project in the amount of $41,273.30, authorizing the City Manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again, same water line, adjacent property, as you can see, the, the property owner accepted the offer of $40,000, it's $41,273 with closing and 30 cents, the additional cost, again, something that was under the 50,000, needed to install the 24-inch transmission main, happy to take any questions.
Council, any questions? Happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers has a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Kirkland, is there any further discussion? Madam-
Yes, I have a question. So I want, on the maps, there were two business owners, am I talking about the right one? Let me make sure I'm talking about the right one. Yes, so there were two business owners, or property IDs, that had, it looked like there was an agreement maybe made, was those made when I don't, when I was not on council, or am I reading the map wrong?
No, you're, you're correct, so they, these, those properties were appraised, as we continue to appraise all of the properties, an offer was made, a counter offer was made, it was within the, the ability, it was within the percentage that council allows us to negotiate in, we then signed an agreement, one in July, one in August, right, because it was under the $50,000 that was allowed by the City Manager, it was executed earlier, now it's actually time to close on the property, so we're here to ratify and get the council approval to make those payments.
All right, and then, I don't know if it matters, but in the recommendation on the packet, it had a different amount, it showed for, for 12F, the amount that we were considering to approve was 41,273.30, but in the packet, it said 23,506.40.
So that was two separate properties?
No, 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 I, I get there are two separate properties, but in here, it's the same amount as on both agenda items.
That may be a typo, this, this is actually, the owner accepted the $40,000 offer, the counter from us, and the additional $1,273.30 is-
Is it on the agenda wrong, or in the resolution?
In the packet, I saw it in the, it's in the packet.
I know, if it is at the resolution-
The resolution has the correct number.
The resolution, okay.
Okay, so we, we think we're good?
I'm good, if it's long as it's not in the resolution.
Okay, I just checked 12.
Oh, yeah, I see it, in the recommendation.
It's, it's probably a cut and paste.
It is, yeah.
But the resolution's correct.
And is the resolution number correct, in terms of cut and paste?
2022-103?
103, yeah.
Ms. Franklin, is that correct? Great question, Councilmember Kirkland, all right, everybody's saying yes. All right, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers and a second from Councilmember-